Afraid to ask.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know what that was. Okay, we are live streaming on YouTube. I will start sharing my screen here. And there's Derek, just in time. Okay, welcome everyone to our city council meeting February 25th, 2021. I'll go over the standard rules. I feel a more of a sense of urgency this time to go over these. We because of an incident that happened far from here, but just so everyone knows in a public meeting, it is being recorded. We're on live feed right now to YouTube. If you're not talking or if there's background noise, ask you to mute your mic. It's been pretty good. We haven't had any problems with that. Mind your camera angle. Like I say, there's no cuts, no edits. What we see goes out to the world wide web and it can't be brought back. When we get to our public comment session later in the meeting, we will be taking public comments at 734-848-6495. We have somebody at City Hall to take your call and you can place voice your opinion on that when we get to the comment section at the at that part of the meeting, I will repeat that number again. But if you want to write it down, 734-848-6495, that's the number to City Hall. At this time, ask you to stand if you're able to for the pledge of allegiance is Councilman Welton on? Could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This time we'll do a roll call and ask you to state where you're calling in from or where you're logging in from.
Gramsa. Here in Luna Pier.
Grimes.
Here in Luna Pier.
Meadows.
Jeff.
Here in Luna Pier.
Wakeman.
Here in Luna Pier.
Anstadt.
Present, but in Florida.
Welton.
Here in Luna Pier.
Mayor Gardner.
Here in Luna Pier. Thank you, everyone. This time I trust everyone had a chance to read the minutes of February 11th, 2021 and the agenda. The second copy that was sent out, there's a minor change there with a correction on some numbers. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2021, as well as the tonight's consent agenda as presented and waive the reading.
And this is done. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Now we will pair bills. Do I have a motion for the bills and warrants and the visa?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills of warrant number 14055 in the amount of $377.61 paid, as well as bills of warrant number 14056 unpaid in the amount of $16,558.07. And then lastly, the visa payment of $964.58 as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
Did you get that, Jolene?
I got it.
Okay, we have motion. We have support. Any discussion? We'll go to a roll call vote.
Gramsa?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes. Motion carried. We don't have any presentations tonight. We'll move on to the mayor's report. Just to clarify, we have Kevin here from Stevens. We have Scott from Republic. And what we're going to do is go through the first part of our meeting and then when we get to new business, I'll open up the floor for questions and answers at that time. Moving on with the mayor's report, I sent some things out. I just wanted to emphasize that our role of planning in something that we probably could do better and our planning commission. It needs a couple of members where I think we're going to vote on one tonight. I think will be a great addition to our to our planning commission. But every committee really has planning at its core. So every committee you're responsible for planning is a vital part of that that committee. And I think we could do just a little bit better at looking down the road because the change is coming at us very quickly. Especially now going out of the pandemic, we need to be prepared for that. There are things happening in the region. There are other municipalities. We are working together with several other municipalities in Monroe County with plans. One of them would be the link plan dealing with the extra traffic that we're going to see over the Gordy Howe Bridge and a lot of it's going right past our region. Another one is our big red dot on the map for electrification and vehicle charging. Luna Pier is one of the biggest areas in the state. They want to put 30 Michigan State set a strategic place to put 30 vehicle chargers is Luna Pier. And you see Detroit, you see the Upper Peninsula covered all over the state. There's one great big red dot right there in Luna Pier. That should get our attention and we need to plan successfully for that. The change is going to happen. It's best to for us to plan for that change and work it in our favor. It's nothing to be afraid of. It's just looking down the road. Someone said, good leaders recognize problems before people even recognize there is a problem. They're solving the problems and that's the key to success. And we have some great leaders here. I'm really excited about our council. It's risky to pick your favorites, but this is my favorite council. I'm really encouraged with the potential that we have here. I borrowed this from from actually from Ferndale from from Mayor Honorable Mayor Plano there. Vision, policy, strategy. We start with our vision right there in the middle is planning. Then we can fund it and implement and then we can measure our success from there and go back and see how well we did. I thought that was a great illustration of how we make things done instead of just getting caught up in meetings and planning things and not executing. All of these steps are important and I'm I mean, looking forward to what we're going to do with our committees. We do need to fill those vacancies on on the committees and feel free to call me. We'll look at the roles, what they those roles require, what kind of skill sets we're looking for and offer those roles to fill them with the right people. Moving on, I was got some a few photos of the progress at a lighthouse there. I know from the outside, it just doesn't look like anything's going on. This is a big room up above. You can see the cutout for the doorway that eventually is going to go out to the deck there. The ceiling, this is this is a firewall ceiling. There'll be a suspended ceiling below that that we're in the process now of estimating the cost on that and getting, you know, we haven't called out for bids yet, but I'll have some updates on that. We added the extra insulation. It was only insulated about halfway when it was built. So we went ahead at this time before we cover those walls to add the extra insulation that it needs. And you see the ductwork up there that is that is done. This is our elevator waiting to be installed. We are waiting on the company to come in and perform the labor. They did not give us a definite date yet and in contact with them a little bit disappointed because they haven't gotten back with me yet and and given us a solid date. I'll keep calling and reaching out to them.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a drop ceiling in there?
Actually, we do because I mean, the ductwork, the way the doctor work is, you can see it's just it is hanging up there. We we may be able to get by without it if if we disguise that ductwork. But
Any commercial space anymore, especially a restaurant or anything like that has exposed ductwork at all. So if it's cheaper.
Yeah, we we have not priced it or committed to it at all yet. So we can consider that. I can I can bring that up with Mike and talk about it. But it's a great suggestion. We can look into that. Any other any other questions on that or comments?
Just an opinion that a drop ceiling is so yech anymore.
Yeah, 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 we can. We can talk about it. That's a great suggestion. That's not my area of expertise. So I appreciate all kind, any input I can get. And I think that's a good, we can talk about that. Over here, this is behind, this is the JD project with Great Lakes Greenery. We they did deliver the steel for the building, the permit application is in the building report. It is in the building office. I didn't see it on the report yet, but there's a there's more things to be added to the next report. I think you'll be encouraged with what's going on there. So we do see progress. I I shared a link with a seminar, a webinar on finance for non-financial officials. I if you haven't had a chance to look at that, it's vitally important. Most cities have a treasurer that handles that in a city administrator. And the council kind of tells them what they want and then they make it happen. We don't have that luxury. We are a lot more hands on, which I think is good. That the information in that webinar is vital for anybody who is involved with budgeting and planning. I I will be following up on that to to make sure everybody has a chance to listen to that. It is it is very good and I highly recommend it. It's things that we there's information we need to know because of our role in budgeting and finance.
Is that not a two-part series that there's another one coming?
There is another one coming up that you can sign up for. I can send that link, SEMCOG or MML sent it out. I can I'll forward it. I just had another email on it today. I did sign up for it and it will be recorded just like the first one. Yeah, this one involves the tax process. The next one coming up is is how how municipalities are financed through revenue sharing with the state and touches a lot on the tax laws. So I'm looking forward to that one, too. I know through the revenue sharing, the state still owes us a ton of money that I don't know if we'll ever see, but I'm sure that topic will come up. Any other questions? Comments? We we didn't get a police report. I don't see the chief Anzel on tonight. I can share a couple of things if I can jump in on the fire department report. The building report is attached. You have a chance to look over that. We did receive the Zoll chest compressor, automatic chest compressor from Firehouse Subs. And firefighters opened it up this week, took it out, assembled it, watched the entire video and did some practicing on it. What this is is a chest compressor that works as soon as you set it up. It does the chest compressions continuously. It really is a lifesaver because as a victim is being transported or the patient's being transported, the chest compressions compressions keep going in as long as they're needed all the way to the hospital. It saves our firefighters. It's good for the the patient in this case, their assistant chief Welton probably displaying. So we thank you to Firehouse Public Safety Foundation for this gift. This is about a $17,000 unit. We thank John Zarb for putting together that grant and applying for it. Lot of good work and collaboration and that is a vital tool, a real life-saving tool. We're really happy to get that. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Derek or John?
Just want to say John's always been a real pleasure to work with and I've learned a lot from him over the last few years working on these and the fire department's getting a real, real good facelift of needed equipment and and he's a big part of it.
Thank you. And we hope to have more information on the recruiting recruiting and retention efforts next week where we're we have a proposal. We're waiting on a proposal. We should have it any day now to kick that off. Now, committee reports.
Before we get off that, can I ask, can I just ask one question relative to the mayor's report?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Relative relative to educating the public about the upcoming police levy. What is the current game plan for coming up with talking points and that we should all be following so that we're presenting information versus trying to sell information? And how will we? I mean, is there, do you propose some sort of a handout that we could each use? When we're just in our everyday communications in addition to something in the newsletter? What is the strategy there in your mind?
The really the kickoff will be the newsletter that's coming out. Where where we have information about it in a few different places in the in the newsletter talking about what it will cover. That will really be the kickoff. I've been kind of holding off doing a grand launch until we have confirmation from the county, which I think everything's in place. We it's everything's been submitted. We pretty much, we know it's going to be on the ballot. And we are starting our efforts now kicking off with the newsletter and then we can take talking points from that to really let everybody know what it covers and really it's a choice for the community. It's their choice, what kind of coverage that they really want and what it's what it's going to take. And it is a reduction from the two mills that are currently being collected. So it's actually an increase, slight, very slight increase, only a tenth of a mill, but it is less than they're paying now. So if they want to continue the sport with roughly the same funding that that they're paying now, then it's their choice and that's how we that's how we present it. But we need we need to do our due diligence to let everybody know exactly what they get for their money and if they want to, if they want to go that route.
So my question is, can we get a draft of whatever's being written to put into the newsletter so that we can whatever if you see if we have any questions about what's written there so that if we're approached by people asking about it, we can be knowledgeable about. Who's writing the article on that for the newsletter?
Actually, I wrote it in my article that I submitted. The chief covered it in his article that he submitted. He covered it more extensively than I did. And we can pull our talking points out of that. We're working with the chief and we are preparing documents, like you say, a strategy to make sure we get the word out and and cover all our bases so that everyone is informed. We can't use city resources to promote it, but we can use city resources for information only. And that's exactly how we're presenting it as information of how the money will be spent. What are what our real choice is? No, no scare tactics, no persuasion one way or other, not telling them how to vote at all. That is not legal and I don't think we even need to go there. We just need to present what's at stake here and let them decide. Let the let the voters decide. Any other questions? If not, I'll ask one more time with committee reports. We should be getting back to meetings very soon. We do have the option of online. We do have parks and rec meeting coming up and that will be live and FAP committee, which will be live. And we should be hearing back from the from the committees on how things are going. Old business, we have none. New business, the big one, our bids for the refuse pickup 2021 through 2025. That's a big commitment. At this time, I'm going to open up the floor to our representatives here who submitted bids. We did receive two bids that you you all had a chance to review. Does anybody have any questions? I'll kick it off. Any questions from council?
I do. Was there any type of an RFP drafted for this so that anybody bidding on this knows exactly what the type of service we're looking for so that they know exactly the target they needed to hit as well? So that there weren't any questions or any assumptions made on any of the bidder's part?
Jolene submitted the the proposal, right, Jolene, of what and it was published. We didn't publish the entire proposal. That would have been very expensive. But we published that we are seeking bids and contact City Hall for the package. Is that correct, Jolene?
Yes. And it was on our website also.
Yes. Yes, and that is how we've done it in the past. Any questions or for our representatives that are here? Scott is with Republic. Or Kevin, who is with Stevens? It's a quiet group tonight. On this time, okay, I'll give, just because Kevin from Stevens is is on the top frame there, I'll give him the way I see it, a chance and then we'll go to Scott. Does that sound fair? Would you like to make any comments, Kevin?
Just that, you know, Stevens disposal is excited to to bid your your refuge collection and we are a local provider, local, private owned and been in the community for 30 plus years. And we're excited about the opportunity to perform service in Luna Pier if that's the direction you choose.
Okay, thank you. And Scott, now we've talked.
Yeah, good after, I'm sorry, good evening, everybody. Scott Kev Watten, Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services. Yeah, very similar. I mean, we've, as you're aware, Republic had the opportunity to work with Luna Pier over the last year. That was a result of our acquisition of All-Star, your contractor at the time. We acquired that that company as well as the accompanying contracts. Luna Pier being one of them. So we've had, you know, we've been working with the community for a year. It's been a pleasure. My understanding is we had this contract many years ago, well before I was I was around in the marketplace. But, you know, we're glad to be back. We look forward to to continuing to work with the city. You know, we're confident in our proposal. We're confident in the services we provide. We already provide it right now, as you know. So with our proposal, nothing really changes from what, you know, service wise, from what the city's currently receiving. And, you know, we look forward to continuing that. A bit about Republic Services, we are, if you're not aware, we are local to the community. We are a national company, but we are local. We have employees that look throughout Monroe County and in the Toledo area. We have a hauling operation in Erie, Michigan, just down the road. And we have the Vienna Junction landfill that's right there on the border of Toledo and Michigan. So that's where your waste goes. We, you know, through host community fees and such that are paid through this contract, that money goes to to some of that money goes to the county. So there is some local generation of fees and funds that go back to the county for environmental type programs through the environmental department there at Monroe County. Other than that, again, look forward to working with the city, continuing to work with the city and I'm open to any questions if there are any.
Are there any extras? Are there any extra services besides these monthly per house charges? Like, what is it to pick up extra items that the citizens would be paying? How does that work?
Like bulk items and such, we've pretty much continued to pick those up at no charge. I can't think of a situation where we've turned anybody away because of too many items at the curb.
Okay.
Now you do have a fee for large items, right? And on a per per item basis. And that's, I know that was, that was the way the contract went before and I know, I know.
Yeah, I guess you're right, Mr. Mayor. I believe you're accurate in that. I'm just that wasn't a part of of the RFP.
So, yeah. I don't, I'm not sure if it spelled out, but the contract didn't show bulk items and it has been in the past, which I think is is fair. That they're they're that's negotiated at a per item.
Yeah, and obviously, you know, if if somebody wants to remodel their house and try to put it out to the curb, we're we're going to have a discussion because that's not what the service is intended for. And, you know, likewise, you know, we've worked with Monroe County in the past and in situations where there have been flooding. I think actually we we may have dropped a dumpster or two in Luna Pier. I know we did up in French Town and the Estrel Beach area and a couple other areas when we had some of that severe flooding. Was it last year or the year before? And those are, those were extra charges that were negotiated with the county.
Thank you. I'll add in regards to the bulk items. I know as far as your your website, it does speak to bulk items and contacting Republic at the current time for for the rates on those. So, but we did address that in the in the bid.
Yes.
As well.
I'm not familiar with where the, what what junction landfill was at? Is that, is that the Erie landfill or is that somewhere else?
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's the Erie landfill, Vienna Junction, right there on right there on the state line, just right down the road from you.
Off Quinnor Road.
Yeah.
Okay, I was aware that you can see it there. I just didn't know that was the one that that was the name of it.
Yeah.
So can either of you speak to the longevity of that particular landfill and what that means for the future?
Yeah, so at this point in time, that landfill will have it varies based on the amount of volume that goes in there. So it is an airspace component. That landfill is going to have somewhere between eight and 10 years ballpark left on on that site. Eight and ten years ballpark left on on that site. Um, we've just excavated a new cell there, so we should have. Um, significant time um, for this contract as well as, you know, future waste. Just depends on all the volume that we take in there. We see a decrease in volume, then it prolongs the life of the landfill. Um, if we get a lot of work and fill it in real quick. Um, you know, it's going to be on the shorter end of that that projection.
Mayor, on these contracts, uh, it's just a five-year contract that we're looking at? From two thousand twenty-two to or twenty-one to twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty, yeah, through twenty-five.
Through twenty-five, so they are five-year contract.
Yes, yes.
And the price goes up accordingly each each year, right?
Yes, and and that, a good, that's a good point. We will have to. Adjust. Um, our. The the rate that we pass on. Uh, as the contract goes on into the years, it doesn't appear that we have enough revenue coming in through the assessment. Uh, the surcharge on on garbage that we have right now, that rate started out high. We we dropped it. At one time because that we were actually collecting more. Then then we were paying out. We adjusted that, and it's been even through this past contract. But it appears we will have to make some adjustments. Going forward before this contract's out.
Thank you.
Yeah, which we are allowed to do according to our charter. As long as we don't make money on it, we're just, we're just assessing what it costs.
So back on the landfill, sorry, I should have said I had a couple of questions there.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, as far as future planning. Uh, there's definitely a fuse on that landfill. So I'm just wondering if there's any type of forecast as to what we could expect at the time that that landfill is no longer available to us. Um, could we expect it to double or triple or anything like that? It's just, we we really need to, we really need to know. What is going to happen, even though we can't tell exactly when, on a law of averages, eight to ten years, you say, so it could be six. Um, but you know, after that, it'd be nice to know if you have, if either of you have a. Uh, a history of this type of thing happened and what's what's happened as a result to the communities that were affected.
So, you know, as far as the Vienna Junction site that Republic Services owns and operates. Um, you know, that site, like I said, has, does have the limited timeframe. Um, what the company's plans are moving forward at this time have not been totally cemented, so it's not fair for me to. To totally say. I will say this, though, that there are options out there. Um, with Republic Services, we do own and operate other landfills. We're one of the largest waste. Collection and processing companies in the United States. That being said, we own and operate Carlton Farms landfill. Um, in very, well, in very southern Wayne County, right, right on the other side of the Monroe County line. In Sumter Township, just off of two seventy-five and Will Carlton Road. So we do have that site as an option. Um, you know, we do have a site that's mothballed right now, the Rockwood landfill up on uh, US Highway, I think it is there and. And right over by Estrel Beach, um, as well as there are other third-party landfills in the area. Um, we do have the City of Toledo landfill, um, the Hoffman Road landfill there, just uh, just inside the Michigan-Ohio border. Uh, as well as, you know, Waste Management has a landfill in Northwood, Ohio, um, which is just, you know, not too far away from us there and uh. In very northern part of Wood County. So there are options, and even, I mean, going even further than that. We do have um, a landfill in Adrian as well that's currently mothballed as well. So there's not a lack of um. Landfill space or opportunity. Um, what kind of cost is it going to be for you? You know, at this point, it's it's a little premature to tell. Just depends on if we're going to direct haul material. Or if we're going to build a transfer station and transfer it out to one of those more regional landfills. And so. Obviously, there's some cost involved in that. Um, but. Also, at some of those regional landfills, sometimes the cost of operating and um, the overall cost of 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 material coming inbound. Maybe a little less because, you know, in volume, you could have, you could see some lower cost as well. Um, certain sites have certain higher uh, operating costs. I saw you tilt your head. So uh, certain sites have um. Certain operating costs, whether it's in host community fees, it could be just general operation um, costs and. Leachate control and and things to that matter. So um, again, a little premature to tell. Um, but you know, we do have options if this site does close. I will say that we do not anticipate at all for this site to close, and it's not even in our plan for the site to. Um, be closed through the duration of this um, contract specific. So uh, you know. And in addition to that, our, you know. We took that into consideration, that, you know, landfill fees and everything else like that, so. Um, you know, we we don't expect to see any um, increased cost as a result of um. You know, landfill operation at Vienna Junction. Um, now I will say if if. Um, if this state or even the federal government or the county or somebody decides, hey, we're going to impose a fee. On trash disposed at landfills, and we're going to put five bucks a ton on it. We're going to come back and we're going to need to chat with you. Um, you know, because that's something, not as a violation of law. But it's just, you know, it it's an unforeseen governmental surcharge that we didn't, you know, nobody could really anticipate. So. Um, so I hope that answered your question.
It did. Thank you. Anything to add from the Stevens side or anything different from the Stevens side on?
Yeah, Neil, I was just gonna, I was gonna.
Longevity?
Um, we we currently are using the uh, uh, Riverview Highlands landfill in Riverview, Michigan. Um, we just signed a another extended contract with them that goes well past the term of this contract. Um, they do also um. Take care of the Monroe County fees that goes back into the environmental needs for Monroe County, so. That's covered there as well. Um, I believe that was a ten-year extension that we just did on that contract with them, so. Um, we're we're locked in there. We do have access, as as Scott mentioned, to the Hoffman Road Toledo landfill. Um, the Waste Management landfill and and uh. Oregon, Ohio, Northville, Ohio there. Um, so and and Carlton Farms as well, so. Uh, we have plenty of options as well. There's no uh, no concern with. Um, the rates and our current bid. Rates that would be affected by any changes there.
Kevin, this is Mike. I have a question. What other towns around Luna Pier do you handle?
Uh, we we handle French Town. Um, moving north into South Rockwood, Rockwood itself, um, Riverview. Uh, Blissfield, the City of Adrian, um. Mylan. Uh, Tecumseh. Uh, we do subscription pickup all over Monroe County, Lamperville, Monroe Township. Um. City of it's any, um. I'm sure I'm missing some there, but we have quite a few municipal contracts.
All right, that's that's enough.
Mayor.
Thank you.
This this Stacy. Um, a couple of months ago, we talked about uh, dumpsters uh, that. Our current provider, I think, gives us two a year. I don't see in the contract, I don't see anything where that's mentioned about the the use of these uh, larger dumpsters for uh. The two, two that we looked at for this past year. So is is there anything that's uh? Proposed for those two dumpsters?
That, I I'm glad you brought that up, uh, because that is not in our proposal that we submitted. We have the option of of paying for two, but we didn't make it into this contract. Uh, it, we didn't put that in the patrol proposal that we submitted, so they're they are not listed in there. You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
I see there is a price in there for uh, for the Stevens proposal, what those cost. I noticed.
Yes, and that is for the treatment plant and municipal building. They do have, that is in the contract. But that's not open to the public. Uh, we we use that and uh, for. The general waste that the city generates through the treatment plant and through uh, the DPW.
Yeah, tho- those are just ten-yard dumpsters. They're not the big, big ones, right? Yeah, okay.
They're they're smaller and they, and we don't fill them up very quickly. If they were open to the public, they would fill up in a matter of hours, but.
Right.
Any other questions from council or? Or comments? Okay, thank you, Scott, for your and and Kevin for your for your comments and answering the questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. At this time, we'll. Move on to the uh, item B on the new business, which is Frank Perry. Uh, I was quite pleased. To see Frank's qualifications. Uh. Very, very good, timely. I I listened to a webinar today and actually participated in it. About planning for electrification. And that's kind of, I know Frank is into more connected vehicles and autonomous vehicles, but. Autonomous vehicles have to have electrification, um, just because of the nature of how much. Electricity they require to operate, so they have to at least be hybrid vehicles. So I'm sure he's very familiar with that. Um, very qualified individual. I'm I'm really pleased. Uh, can't wait to talk to him and get to know him. I think he'll be a great asset. For Planning Commission.
I, Mayor, I think it'd be wonderful, first of all, to have someone new on the Planning Commission. And we would welcome him with open arms.
Yeah. Yes, I am. I'm really excited to to talk to him and and get to know him and uh.
I will add, he's going to be a great asset. He has such a history with the city. Uh, and now is in a position to give back. For all the years that he enjoyed, what he enjoyed as a youngster, as well as he is a electrical engineer. So um, he's very, very uh, knowledgeable with um, especially the uh, the electric vehicle charging that. Kind of looking at, so it's kind of timely that he's going to be added into that, but it's, you know, in general, he's going to be a very good asset across the board.
Yes, and uh, we have a very talented community. We. We are not the same community we were. Five or ten years ago, and we have a, not that we weren't talented back then, but we've only added to that talent base. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of skills out there. One thing important.
Just need to recruit and tap it.
Yep, the the important question is to ask. At this time, I'll move into the community input. If there. If somebody would like to make a public comment, you can call in seven three four eight four eight six four nine five. The YouTube feed that you're hearing this from is about forty-five seconds delayed, but so we'll, we will. Give people time to call in. If there are any comments from some of our guests that logged in live. You can feel free to speak up now if you have any questions or comments you'd like to uh, propose to us.
Mayor Dave Davison.
Yes, Dave, go ahead.
Just a couple of things, um. Uh, reference the um, dumpsters that you were talking about there. Um, both these companies for years, we've been getting dumpsters donated for the Freedom Festival, which are really greatly needed. And uh, without cost, we were getting those dumpsters. Are either one of these gentlemen, um. Could they address that maybe later on or not at this council meeting, but we always had those dumpsters donated to us. And another thing I'd like to comment on was this last snow emergency that we had. Uh, the city employees did a fantastic job, a fantastic job. With that said, I've noticed uh, on social media that they took a couple hits. You took a lot of hits yourself. Um, which I think to me is ridiculous. But I'd like to see if it possibly could be done, though, Mayor, is that either Phil Costello or the police chief. If we could get a opinion from the State's Attorney General's Office. On the use of city equipment to plow out some driveways. And I'm not talking all the driveways in the City of Luna Pier. That'd be ludicrous. But what I'm talking about is if the city could have a list. Of people that. For instance, needed to get the chemotherapy treatments, needed to get the kidney dialysis treatments. And were unable, because of physical conditions, to plow their driveways out after we plowed them in. Um, I think a lot of this. Came up with on the local news stations. I know it showed. Uh, Detroit Police Officers out there while they're working, shoveling out driveways. And I I think that might have caused a lot of confusion. Um, but I think if we got an opinion from the State Attorney General's Office, one way or another, about using city equipment. In that type of a situation. If it's an emergency and someone needs to go to some medical treatments or something. I believe as a city, it's our our obligation to help these people out. And, you know. Damned if you do or damned if you don't, but if someone needs to get plowed out to get some medical treatment. Anybody would be crazy to try to deny them that privilege. That's what I've got to say on that. But if we could get something. An opinion from the State Attorney General's Office, that might clear a whole lot of things up. Thank you for listening to me.
Yep.
I'd I'd like to add to that if I could. Um. I I think that is a good idea to uh, to solicit an opinion on that as to whether it would be uh. Prudent to use city resources for those types of things. I will also add, though, that the the day that it did snow, the very next morning. And I do this anyway, but uh, I do my whole street. I do everybody's driveway. I widen the road with my blower. Uh, you know, it's just a the neighborly thing to do, and it's for that exact reason, Dave, that uh, that I do that. There would be, I couldn't have it in my heart. That anybody at least, you know, on my street at least. Could not get to the hospital because we've got a couple of people here that could actually need it at any given time. So. Yes, as a community, I think uh, it would be great if other people would step up and do that, but it may not be a bad idea to to see if it wouldn't be prudent for to use city resources either.
Um, let me, let me jump in here. I I want to thank the police chief because. We didn't, we asked if there was anybody that he knew that plowed driveways because we have an elderly um. Relative that lives down at the north end of town. And he actually reached out to some community people and thank goodness, they all volunteered and. Two of the guys went down, they had claws on their truck, and they plowed out her driveway for just out of the kindness of their heart, which was. Wonderful that they just stepped up because they were asked. So sometimes if we just ask, people are willing to. Help.
Yeah, and I will step in and say that we had resources available. To the person that complained. But the person did not want to hear that and hung up, actually hung up on me. Before I could even offer the resources and and get the driveway plowed out. I I don't like to answer. Things in that situation, and and the post has been deleted, but there is much more to that story. Um, that we had resources available and the driveway did get plowed. This car did have access to the street. There's two driveways. And one of the driveways was clear enough to drive through, and the city did not pile any snow across that driveway. And so there's. And so, there's more to the story. I just don't see a need to go into it. The post has been deleted. There's there was an offer to get that snow removed and get access to that vehicle. And so, there was plenty of options that we could have explored. But the person wasn't willing to go that far. It was easier to hit the keyboard, I guess. So, I do plan on, you know, keep working with the public and meet the needs. And I can, I'll share what the state rules on finance are. And we do, we do have options that we can use. I'll share a document that's published by the state that covers everything of how we can spend money. And again, listen to that seminar, that webinar that I sent. It covers that very topic of what we can spend money on and what we cannot spend money on as a municipality.
I know we're on public community time, but could I just throw one more thing in there?
Sure.
In an emergency situation, like if someone's waking up at 5:00 AM to go to chemo or dialysis and they are completely plowed in, I think that's, in my opinion, grounds for using the fire department for lithosis services, no different if someone had slipped and fell and needed help back up. They need help getting in and out of their house. That's something we have tools and equipment doing appropriately.
Exactly. And that's the responsible thing to do and we would have no problem defending that. We would not leave someone in that situation.
And we would be happy to do that.
Yes, and we're perfectly legal. I know where we, that there would not be a problem doing that. Well, hearing no more comments, I think we'll move on now to the council action. We'll jump to the first one on the list here, the bids for the agreement. I trust everyone had a chance to review them thoroughly. And do we have a motion? Any motion for contract for a refuge?
Question, does it have to be decided today?
It really should. Our contract has expired. And Republic has been honoring the expired contract.
I'll make the motion to approve the bid from Republic Refuge for the 2021 Refuge Agreement in the amount of, I don't see an amount. It's got each year. I don't know what kind of amount we put in there.
Do we, do you want to?
There is no total price in there.
Right, you can just read off each year.
Yeah, read off each year. You'd need to read off each year?
All right, year, year one, which would be 20, I guess 21, 22, and the amount of $8.90 per unit a month. Year two, $9.17 per month. Year three, $9.45 per month. Year four, $9.73 per month. And year five, $10.02 per month. As presented, waving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion and we have support. Do we have discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go to.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The numbers that Stacy quoted, is that the ones with the 96-gallon cart provided? And does the, and do they re? Do they, oh, that's Stevens, isn't it?
Yeah, you're looking at Stevens.
Okay.
Stevens submitted an alternate proposal and with, you know, the different containers.
And do they, do they supply those?
I only got a copy of the one proposal from Stevens. I didn't see the second proposal.
You should have both of them there. You should, because you read, you read from the Republic proposal.
This is Mike. I can't really vote on this, but can I comment on it? I just have a question. Why are we, why would we not be considering Stevens when it would save around $6,000 a year for the town? At least that's the way I'm reading it. I just have a question.
That is correct.
So, I don't really understand why we would propose the other one without discussion.
I want to rescind my proposal because I want to see this other contract. I only saw the one contract from Stevens.
I mean, rough math, says it's about $6,000.
Mayor.
Yes.
It sounds like we have a lot of confusion.
Yes, we do.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this to the next council meeting. Give us all two more weeks to get it straightened out. I, I'm hearing, from what I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of different confusion.
Yeah, I am. I am hearing some confusion. I am concerned that we are operating on an extension on an expired contract. And I agree, there's definitely some confusion here. Because Stacy read from the Republic contract, but he said he only had the Stevens contract. So, I'm confused.
That's concerning to me.
Yes, and this is a five-year commitment. This is a huge commitment.
I agree. That's why I feel like we need to table this. I'll make a motion that we table it to the next council meeting.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
I think that there should be. I think we should have a workshop.
Okay, we.
If I may, from what I see from the two bids right now, Stevens is actually lower even with providing the 96-gallon cart. I kind of like the idea that everyone would have the same cart in town and get rid of multiple trash cans and bags and I don't know what other people's thoughts are on that, but.
I think we need, we need some public opinion on that.
Can I ask, with the carts, are they going to be provided to each resident?
That's how I see it.
Yes, Kevin from Stevens here. Yes, we would provide one cart to each resident, each home.
And can I ask, because I'm not sure size, is the 96, is that the large cart?
That's the, yes. It's equivalent to three garbage, standard garbage cans.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm assuming that means, I know those cans do give the possibility of an automated pickup. You know, an arm that picks up. Which doesn't affect us, but.
Yeah.
Will those trucks be able to make it down the smaller streets down in Lakewood?
Yes, they would. We currently are not proposing to use an automated truck. We would still use the traditional railroader truck for your community. But in the future, it probably would, it would be an opportunity for us to go that way. But yes, they can still make the the turning radius and the axle placement is pretty similar on our trucks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we have a, we have a motion to table and support and in the discussion, we do have to consider that we are working on an expired contract and we have to trust that we can fill our, we can provide the service for, until we decide on this contract.
We could have an emergency meeting too.
Yes, yes, we can do that.
We can make it happen.
Okay.
We could have that emergency meeting on Tuesday. That would give us enough time to post it and everything.
Just because we're on an expired contract, I don't feel is a big enough reason to jump into it with this much confusion and concern.
Okay, I agree that we need to be solid on this. I will say, it's important to read the council packet as soon as possible so we can ask all these questions. I know the contracts are available for everybody to read. At this time, we have a motion. Go ahead, Jolene.
And also the full entire proposal, not just the bid portion, is here at the office. I didn't scan the whole thing because like Republic's is a binder and Stevens has, you know, multiple pages. If you want to come in and read it or look at it, that's available at the city.
We, and we do have, we might be able to pull that apart and scan it to a file and send it.
Yeah.
Well, in all fairness and no, no harm, no foul on what you just said, Mr. Mayor, but we did get the packet yesterday. And I wasn't myself, I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda. So, if I'd have known that, if I'd have known it was going to be on the agenda this time, I might have asked or,
Okay.
you know, again, we just got it yesterday.
Okay, point well taken. At this time, I think we have a motion on the table. We have a motion to table this and we have support. And is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Gramsa?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes. Motion carried. Item is tabled.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the application of Frank Perry to the Planning Commission?
Make a motion to approve the application of Frank Perry for the Planning Commission with the term expiring. Hang on.
1/15.
Thank you, January, the cameras were in my way. January 15, 2024, as presented and wave the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you very much. Council input information. Is there anything we left out there that anyone would like to comment on? If not, we'll go to the correspondents. We received our thank you letter that you saw for the Census Bureau, United States Census Bureau, for our participation and our cooperation with the, with the collection of the census.
Future. Yeah, did you, I have a question about that. What did we, how did we finally end up on that? Did we, did we get our participation numbers up from what they were when we were kind of behind the eight ball?
We were lower than the average, but we, we did go up and we did everything we could to promote it with postings and Facebook postings and different things throughout the city. So, we did what we can. I don't know how that's calculated. That's my question is, how is it, how is it calculated? I know we were behind. We did a push and our numbers went back up again. I did not see what our final numbers were. But we were trending upwards towards the end of it.
Thanks.
We have the meeting dates where, again, we are meeting in person with some meetings when we can meet the occupancy rules and the distancing rules. Oh, no, that's an old one. February came and went. Parks and Rec, Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at Water Tower Park. Feb, a meeting Tuesday, March 17, 2020, at Water Tower Park. VDA is to be determined. Planning, this next scheduled meeting is March 23, 2021, 4:00 at City Hall. And City Council is March 14, 2021, 7:00 PM. And that will be a Zoom meeting and you can look for a special meeting coming up here. We will post that appropriately.
No, it's not the 14th.
Oh, is it? Oh, that's right. You know, that's typo on my part. Correct that.
Sunday.
Oh, yeah, we don't want to meet them. Okay, correct that. March 11. Thank you, everyone. I, I trust you are looking ahead and planning for our future. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Do you have that, Jolene?
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. And I will contact Kevin and Scott and we will, we'll talk some things out here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. And the meeting is adjourned and I'll end the broadcast here.
Thank you.